All right, everybody. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting this evening on June 5th, 2024. My name is Commissioner Hanson. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission. This evening's meeting will start by a prayer. I'll go ahead and give that, and then I'll have Commissioner Bullock lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll go ahead and start with the prayer right now. Father in heaven, as we come before the prayer tonight, we're grateful for the opportunity that each of us has to be here today in our different capacities. We're thankful to be able to serve the city and serve the residents here in Washington, living such a great place. Please watch over our families while we're here with safety, and please watch over each of us that we can return home safely to our families. We ask you to please watch over this meeting with my spirit that we can all speak our minds and our thoughts in a professional manner, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Commissioner Bullock. I'd like to welcome again you all to our meeting tonight. Welcome to our city attorney, the staff, a couple council members here in the audience. Grateful you guys could all attend. We'll go ahead and start our meeting looking for an approval of the agenda for tonight's Planning Commission meeting as outlined.
Units, ninety-six two-bedroom units and thirty-three bedroom units. The layout of the buildings are more efficient as the building count has been reduced by three buildings, with the new total being seven buildings. This reduction puts more distance between the buildings, providing more open space in the development. The surrounding zoning is open space to the north, R16 to the east, R3, and C2 to the south and west. Required parking for this development is three hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces. Since the original approval, parking has increased by forty-three spaces for this new site, and includes a total of four hundred and nineteen parking spaces, which is thirty over the required amount. The parking is broken down as such: forty-seven garage stalls, ninety-nine covered stalls, and two hundred and seventy-three open stalls. Amenities for the development include a pool, a clubhouse area, dog park, pickleball and basketball court, playground and grass area, along with direct access to a future city trail system to the east side of the project. There will also be a six-foot block wall around the entire development as shown on the plan. The proposed building height is thirty-six foot, eight inches tall. Staff is supportive of this project at this location, with the exterior finishes, building layout, and the overall design of the project being adequate. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-24-02 for the proposed PUDR multifamily development design standards. Zone change on to the City Council, and that's based off the findings and conditions as seen in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions you might have for staff.
There used to be a mobile home park back there that got taken out, so.
Sorry, we're just trying to figure out where it's located. We're not saying anything important.
Eldon, with this going to City Council, seeking approval, if it's approved, do they have intentions of starting, or is there a possibility it will be delayed again, or is there any way of knowing that?
Through my interactions with them, they're ready to get moving. They've been delayed much further than they wanted.
I'll ask you just a second to come up, just so we can get your name on the record, if you don't mind. Thanks. Commissioners, any other initial questions before we open this to the public hearing? All right, thanks, Eldon. I'm gonna go ahead and open this. It's a public hearing. Is there anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item? Sure, come on up one by one. If you could, please state your name for the record, and if you could, please keep your comments to around three minutes. Thank you.
My name's Sarah Namolka. I'm actually the applicant. I just wanted to address that question. We actually have our drawings ready to submit early July, so our intention is to get this civil approval, hopefully, fingers crossed, over the next couple of weeks with you guys and the help of the commission, and then we're ready to go for our building permits. So we fully intend to move full steam ahead, no other delays. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Sure, come on up. And again, please state your name for the record.
My name's Don Wiley. I'm the property owner of the property to the south. I just have a couple of questions. Is this a subsidized project?
No, it's not. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Low income?
I'm getting a head nick this way from the applicant, so we're gonna go.
Okay, and then secondly, has consideration been made about one way in, one way out, as far as the access?
We'll ask the applicant, if you don't mind. We'll take a note of that.
And then the third question is, is that if that's the case, do they plan on putting a light, some of, or you know, a stoplight on 500 West?
We'll find that out as well.
Yeah, okay, because it's really hard.
Yeah, that came up, that came up the last time this came up, was that getting out of there.
Yeah, it's tough now if you put that many vehicles in it. That'd be impossible.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, I might ask you to come up in a minute. Let's get all the questions, and then we'll kind of come back up. All right, sir, if you could, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
George Staley. I want to know if the inner structure is big enough for that many new homes, because the sewer line, where it comes, it comes down through the middle of the creek, I think, and if that has to be enlarged, I don't know what size it is now, or whether it's big enough. I'd like to know that. And they did answer one question. There is going to be a fence around it.
Okay, thank you.
And how would I find out the, how big an eight or a nine or ten-inch pipe would be for the number of people that are there and the number that's on it?
We'll try to address it tonight for you, okay? Thanks. Anybody else? All right, Sarah, if we could have you come, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and then we'll ask the applicant to come back up, and let's see if we can get some answers for some of these questions. Did you catch them all?
Yeah, I think I caught all of them, but please let me know if I missed any. So the first was, is this subsidized or low-income? The answer is no, this will just be market-rate housing. For the one-way-in, one-way-out, we were required with our last-site plan, same density, to do a traffic study. We obviously believe, due to the exact same number of units, that the traffic study still stands. With that, we were asked in conjunction with the city to implement a lighted intersection at Telegraph Street. We still intend to do that with the help of the city, so that's still in the works with the city. We actually have that fully engineered and ready to go. Is the sewer capacity okay? Obviously, there's a history there with it backing up and being plugged. We've worked with the city engineers, as well as our engineer, and have been told that there is plenty of sewer capacity for this project, but we will obviously be very thoughtful if our project, you know, continues to back that up, work with the city, and make sure that we're not overloading the system.
Do you know what's changed with the building of this, or if there was problems before, what's changed to make it okay now before you even start your project? Do you know? Is there something that's taken place?
What problems?
Yes.
So originally, we were looking at doing eleven buildings. That's obviously a much more cost impactful project for us than having a project that has the seven buildings. So this is a more efficient way to build the same number of units for us. It obviously creates more open space as well for the city. I believe, and Rick can speak to this a little bit further, but we were pushing up on our last-site plan to our open-space requirements for you all, and this gets us back to those open-space requirements in a healthier way, making sure that we're meeting those within the zoning. So really, this was about kind of condensing the building without losing units, to make sure that we're building the most affordable and, you know, still impactful project that we could.
Okay. Thanks, Sarah.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I have a question for you, or a couple. Are these built to rent or for sale?
These will be built to rent.
To rent?
Yep.
And who's the builder on these?
This will be a rimrock construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe just stay, Sarah, but this is not a question. Just an explanation to the questioner. In situations where development application requires an upsizing in a service, it's the city's practice to require the development to install that upsizing. Typically, the need of the system is not known until there's an approval for the project, and the city staff would then analyze that and then communicate with the applicant to get the upsizing that's needed. Do we have somebody that knows the sewer pipe sizes today, John, and whether they're sufficient? Are they?
Yeah, right. Please state your name for the record.
Wow, this is gonna be a long night if we keep this up. Yes, we've done some evaluation on the system. A lot of the previous issues with that sewer line coming through there was due to some access issues and our ability to actually clean the lines on a regular pattern. As part of this project, we've worked with the developer to get us better access into there and actually clean the lines better, so we don't have, at this point, we don't have any issues with capacity in that vein.
Was there a history of backup?
There's been a few recorded in my conversations with Lester and Andy, who've overseen the sewer system.
But we're comfortable.
I think, didn't they not let us know it was because of things that were put in the system, also much the size of the system? We'll leave it at that. There were a few things shoved down the sewer line somewhere along the line. They caught and caused the problem.
So, but you can see in here, they provided us an access to get down there to our manholes that are in through the creek area in there and stuff, so that we can actually do a better job with our maintenance schedule.
How big a line is it?
It's fourteen.
Fourteen. It's a good size.
While you're standing here, some questions about a street light at that intersection came up. Could you address that a little bit?
Yep. Signal light was all discussed during the initial approvals on this. It is in the budget. There's an agreement in place for us to proceed forward with installation of that once the project moves forward. So we're ready to go once the project's ready.
Okay.
I see on the conditions that number two, three, and thirteen requires a traffic study, a final drainage study, and the stoplight at Telegraph and 500 West when warranted.
You'll recall on the first application, there was a lot of discussion at this body and the City Council about drainage downward into the slope, and so that was, that was part of where that condition came from.
Right. We require that when they submit for their grading plans. That's a study we have to have in order to approve, so.
And they haven't passed that time limit on the traffic study?
No, they're redoing their traffic study. Everything will be good, resubmitted and stuff. Yeah. I mean, they're not changing their densities or anything, so it's, there's no change to the study, so.
Other than traffic may have increased.
Same number of units. Yeah. So, yeah, we don't see a problem there with the traffic study, so. We know the light's warranted once this development goes in, so.
All right, thanks, John. I know that the public hearing is closed, but is there somebody that didn't get their question answered? If you don't mind coming up to the microphone, just so they can get a record of it and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
The reason that I'm concerned about the sewer, because the whole sewer line runs right through my property, and they don't have any access to get to that sewer line on my property, but they do through the project, where the sewer easement is. So that's gotta be addressed some way.
Did we miss that? We're getting access through somebody else's property, correct?
We actually have access from this property.
In addition to this, or just through this one?
Well, George, help me with the math there. You just said the line runs entirely through your property, but they're able to access it.
But most of it does. I can't tell where this is, because, so, why? Where's the creek? Okay, don't make it big.
But you couldn't see it, George.
The sewer line comes down through here, goes down into the bridge, to the very top end of my property almost. There's no access, there's no people from this side, it all goes from this side and through that, to the back hole.
Okay.
And I'm also concerned because all the projects that have been.
Melody.
Also concerned because of all the projects that have been up north of that property and put asphalt on it, because the creek floods much more than it ever did, and that eleven acres is going to bring a lot of water into the creek that will dump into, through my property into the creek. I shouldn't say mine, our property. And Turner's are really good neighbors. I'm not trying to do anything, but I just think that some of these things should be addressed before.
We're being told that they have been addressed and that they're acceptable. It sounds like you're not agreeing with that, or are you hearing something different than what we're hearing?
No, I'm just saying that I haven't seen where this, where they're going to be able to get to those manholes unless they make a gate through Turner's.
They've told us they're gonna access them through Turner's as part of this project.
Well, and that's all, you know, and I should have been here long before, but this is the first time I've seen.
That was stated tonight. Tonight, it was stated that as part of this revised project, there's access to those manholes through this project.
Okay.
Which map? This right here? That gray area right there.
That'll go down to a road along the wash.
Get down to a road along the wash? How are they gonna put a road over my property?
It's an access point, not a, it's not gonna be a road road. It would be an access to get to. You were asking how they're gonna do it.
Yeah, but when they say they're gonna put a road down along the wash.
Yeah, so staff, staff heard your concerns last time about access. It's been required in this, in this rendition as well.
Okay.
We've got, the city will have the right to access the easement down there. Now, sewer easements come with some rights to use of the surface, and the city's gonna exercise that down there.
Meaning what?
If we need to get down there to clean out manholes, we'll go and exercise that right to go clean out manholes. That's what I mean.
Yeah, but you have to stay within the.
Within the easement, yeah.
Within the easement, that's all I'm, I'm asking. Okay.
Your other question about drainage, we heard it last time, and again, it's been required as a condition that they produce a drainage study that's satisfactory to the city.
Okay, and when will that be available, so people can look at it?
I don't know. We aren't requiring it yet, because they're still at the application phase. They'll be required to produce that before they can occupy the premises.
Is that in another hearing or no other hearing?
No, those are technical. We don't run those through hearings. That's a technical requirement that staff will require of their professionals.
How can we see that study before they start building?
You can come ask for it.
Okay, ask at what office?
You'd ask the Planning and Jowning Office.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Commissioners, any additional questions that we have for staff that have not been addressed, or comments? And if not, I'll look for a motion on item 4A.
Right now, hey, Drew. So the ownership of the creek, does George own that, or is that? That?
This right here.
Yeah, right here.
There's several property owners. George stayed in one of them, down by the, and the Turner's. It kind of crosses a couple of times our property.
Does the city have any ownerships in there? I think that was the piece I was just on, actually. The one that you pointed to, and it doesn't come up with a name, so Cotton Town Village owns that piece that I was just on, okay? Which I'll show you. This piece is Cotton Town Village. This piece, it's saying it doesn't have anything, so that means it's ours technically.
And that's the creek?
Well, part of it, you can see the creek is this dark, dark line that meanders all over the place. The Turner's, of course, is this piece on the left-hand side here. If I can get my arrow to bounce around, you can see it. That's owned by the Turner family. And then just up and down this area is just different ownerships.
One that the city owns is the San Diego Basin, the Stream and Storm.
Yeah. That would be this, this long, narrow piece.
There's no pipe going to a storm drain, though, from there. Is that correct?
Not to a storm drain, right, John? We don't have it up there, or is it just go directly into the creek as it's flow? But they have to detain it, and that's what you saw. That's why I pointed that out when that was being talked about. What they're gonna do here is they'll handle their LID and do the detention for the project here, and then it will release in its pre-development flow. So it won't come any faster than what it is now. This pond will be taking care of that, and how they design the rest of the project, so.
Anything we need to address from these two over here?
I don't know. Again, just to reiterate, last, the project has only changed with the movement of the buildings.
True.
That's all that it is. The parking has actually increased. The open space has increased. It's the same sewer lines we were dealing with two years ago, same answers, same traffic, same answers, same, you know, again, they're bringing it back, because it is not. They're building it differently than what the approved one was two years ago.
Maybe we're getting smarter, though.
No, I just wanted to let everybody know, it's not like it, you know, these things have been, you know, we went through that before, and then that pipe is still a fourteen-inch sewer pipe, and, but we did get some more research on it. We've, we did find out that, yeah, there were some backups, but then we heard, you know, why two of them happened is because of stuff that was put in there that should not be in the sewer line.
Yeah.
And so we had to go clean that out, and that was the two bad ones, where, from what I've been told, you know, over the history, was, it was because they pulled stuff out there that should not have been in the sewer line. So, things happen.
All right, I'll still, are the motions, still looking for a motion on the table, or are there questions from anybody?
Chairman, I may just state one more thing. While this is a new development proposal, this is a redevelopment of an area that was previously occupied by residential units. I believe those units were installed before Mr. Staley's commercial center. They were draining into that section of the creek before his commercial center, and so I'm not saying that justifies any abuse to Mr. Staley or his property or his land, but some of these things were there when he built and as he built, and so this would be a redevelopment. The city's tried to improve circumstances that Mr. Staley's brought to our attention, namely, the drainage and sewer. He did also ask about whether a fence would be around it. I don't know if Sarah, come on, did you answer that one? There would be, it would be fenced as well. But yeah, this one is handled a little differently than it would be if it was just, you know, open space being, you know, developed for its first time.
This, this is Commissioner Bullock. I moved, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Z-2402, the revised, to revise the current design standards to the approximate, approximately eleven point twenty-two acres zone PUD located at 500 West, 115 North, and with the two findings and thirteen conditions, and send this to City Council.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. I second that. I've got a first and a second individual voting. Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Sheel?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well, and this, we will send this to our City Council with our recommendation for approval. Thank you to those that came for their public comments. Appreciate it. That's on the record, and Council will receive that. Item number 5A we'll move to, this is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council as well, for a revised conditional use permit, C-2407, for a remodel of Zion Harley-Davidson located at 2345 North Coral Canyon Boulevard. The applicant is Troy Belliston, and I'll turn the time over to Eldon for the report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to give the existing building a facelift. The new exterior finish will enhance the look of the Zion Harley-Davidson business by updating the building with modern finishes and colors. The update will include painting the trim and canopies a dark gray color, painting the accent walls beige and black, installing metal copper paneling, and extending the existing canopy with post and beam as shown in the exhibit. There are no other changes to the exterior building and use at this time. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the intent of the PCD Commercial Use Regulations. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of C-24-07, allowing for the new exterior finishes to the current and existing Zion Harley-Davidson business located at 2345 North Coral Canyon Boulevard, and that's on to the City Council with the findings and conditioned as outlined below. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioners, I'll turn the time over to you for any questions, comments. I think it looks really good. Is there any, out of curiosity, how long has this location been Harley-Davidson as it is now? Do we have any idea?
It was first built, first built as Harley-Davidson, I believe.
Okay.
When it was built, it was. Is there, there's no structural changes to the building, right, Eldon? It's mostly just refreshing?
Yes. I think it looks good. Commissioners, any other initial questions for staff before I open this for the public hearing? I'll go ahead and open this to the public hearing section or portion of this particular item. Anybody like to speak to this item in the chamber? Please come forward. And it does not look like we have any takers. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll turn the time back over to Commissioners for questions, or Troy, if you want to say anything, you certainly don't have to.
Drew, you may, maybe just as an education note, explain why just a remodel of the exterior comes before the Planning Commission in this type of a zone.
Well, as we know, a lot of our commercial buildings, to get a CUP, it's be based on size, but within that, it's also a, a finish is provided you, and that's what, they have to build that to that approved CUP. So if they change that CUP, then they're changing that approved design, so we just bring it back for the new design, so it can be looked at and then go along with that original approval, but with the new updated, proposed look. And again, this will have a few things added. I don't know if I'd call them structural, but they're trying to add a few awning.
And again, this will have a few things added, I don't know if I'd call them structural, but they're trying to add a few awning areas will be extended, so I guess we can't say there's not going to be no structural, but they'll be adding some things, but it'll be to the exterior, um, with those, those attached awnings, and, uh, try to find that for you again. These ones on the front and around the corner.
Well Drew, I can, I can touch base on that if you want, Troy Belliston. Uh, go, so that awning right there is already there. That kind of a curved entry awning, the one to the left, that's, um, like a patio, that one is, is half there, I guess the center section would be there, they want to extend it out full width of where that little recess is in the building. And then if you go back to the front elevation, um, go back two slides. Right there. That canopy over the bike, right now, it's, it, that doesn't exist, they want to extend that out just to kind of add a little of depth to the front of the building. The building was first built in two thousand and four, and it was just, pretty much just a T-shirt shop. And then they extended it in two thousand and eight, you know, for the service. This remodel will actually, this store has never been a full point dealership, as, as they, uh, discuss it. Their allocations have always come through Vegas, and so what this remodel will do, Harley's gonna upgrade them to a full point dealership. So they'll have, you know, better allocations for bikes. As far as the elevation or the look, I mean, that's, took about two years to get through Harley corporate, so, you know, that's, it, it's a long process for their designers to look at it and, and, you know, their branding to approve it, so. Um, but it'll be a full remodel inside and out. Said in a nutshell.
What Troy's telling you, if you want to tweak the outsides, it's probably okay, it'll just take two years to get built.
No, I mean, any, anything, any little tweak to this has to go back to corporate. Every little thing has to go back to corporate, so it's, I mean, I, I think it looks pretty good, but, you know, just, this commission gets it. It's nice, we have a cheerleader back here for it, so, we appreciate that.
Somebody wore their uniform back there.
Okay, and so I, I would suggest that we have added condition to this, okay? And the condition is?
No discount, Commissioner.
I suggest a shirt. Cory said a bike. I, I'm pretty sure you'll run into Utah ethics laws if you do that. Unless it's under fifty bucks, right?
How about Troy giving you a ride around it on his car?
They do, they do have a dealer days if you want to come out.
All right, thanks Troy.
Troy, maybe just out of personal curiosity, is the brand of Harley, it, it looks like the brand is refreshing as well.
Yeah, there, there is, all of it is. Well, you know, every, every corporate company goes through certain, you know, every five or ten year rebrands, um, this is Harley's new, uh, fuel branding is what they're calling it. Um, and it's the most current generation of, of Harley prototypical design.
We may need to get Councilman Anderson a new, an updated T-shirt with this new branding.
Yeah, that's the old stuff.
All right, I'll, uh, look for a motion, Commissioners, on this item.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of uh, the conditional use permit for the remodel of Zion Harley Davidson, located twenty-three forty-five North Coral Canyon Boulevard with the findings and conditions outlined by staff, sent to the City Council.
It's Shiel, I second. All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Shiel. Individual voting, Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Tupow?
Aye.
Shiel?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an I as well. We will send this to the City Council with our recommendation for approval on the conditional use permit. Anything else, that's the last item on the agenda this evening for our Planning Commission meeting, is there anything else from the Commissioners that needs to be brought before the body at this time? Okay, we're going to go ahead, I'll look for a motion to, um, adjourn the Planning Commission meeting, and then shortly thereafter, we will start our Land Use Authority meeting, so I'll look for a motion to.
This is Shiel, I, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
This is Bullock, I'll second.
All right, first and second, all in favor? All right, the Planning Commission meeting is adjourned, we're gonna take about thirty, forty-five seconds, and then we'll start our Land Use Authority meeting. Welcome, everybody, we're going to go ahead and start our Washington City Land Use Authority meeting for June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first item on the agenda this evening, I'll look for an approval of the agenda as outlined. A motion to approve.
This is Commissioner Tupow, I make a motion to approve the agenda as outlined.
Shiel, I. Shiel, I second.
I've got a first and a second on the agenda approval, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, all right, the agenda's approved, as is, I'll look for approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Did we have anything, is this the one we didn't?
Oh, we had.
We did, all right, uh, from May fifteenth? Again, I will not be voting, I was not here.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I move to approve the minutes from the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meet, Land Use Authority meeting.
It's Shiel, I second.
Got a first and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved, I kind of paused, because I'm like, does a certain number of people have to approve the minutes, like?
Majority.
It has to be a majority of who is here. Okay. So, just out of curiosity, if there was not three people here tonight that were there at that meeting, those minutes would be pushed to the next meeting to be approved?
Correct, they would not be approved, and we would ask for clarity as to non-approval, so that we could get them accurate for, we, we try not to have dispute on our history of record-keeping of the meetings, and so, yeah, if, if there's a no vote, we'd want to clarify that.
Okay.
Uh, we, we, I think there were only three here last time, is that right?
Yeah, a vote of three is sufficient, that's, that's a majority of the core.
Perfect, uh, opportunity, item number three, to declare any reason for an abstention or conflict for many of the Commissioners this evening? On any items? Nope, nobody on number three. Item number four, A, this is a public hearing and consideration to approve a preliminary plat for the Club at Coral Canyon, located at Palm Island Drive and Telegraph Street. The applicant is American Land Consulting, and I'll turn the time over to Eldon for the report.
Thank you, Commissioners, this particular subdivision is proposing sixty-one single-family residential lots on an area covering fifty-five point four-three acres. This is a one-point-one density unit per acre ratio. The zoning designation of this location is PCD, the surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, east, south, and west. This subdivision will be a gated community with private roadways. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning, the request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the Land Use Authority approve the preliminary plat for the Club at Coral Canyon subdivision based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. And I'll just note can, uh, two additional conditions beyond our standard, condition thirteen states prior to final plat application, Telegraph, improvements shall be completed, including any and all trail improvements, and then condition fourteen, the secondary access shall be asphalt pavement and meet Fire Access Code and specification requirements approved by the Fire Department and Public Works Department, including a secondary access maintenance agreement. And that concludes the report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Where, this is Commissioner Tupow, where is that secondary access going to be, tentatively?
It's that dark shaded area.
So they're gonna be right next to each other, there's one off of that roundabout, and then another one right next to it?
Yeah.
It won't be used other than emergencies. The reason they're doing that is in case this road gets blocked off for any reason out here going onto Telegraph. They'll have a secondary access if they need to, under any circumstance, that any reason this road might be blocked.
So where that comes down to, is that where that maintenance?
Yes, that's the maintenance shop right there.
That road there that comes off of Telegraph, that you have your arrow on, is it still dirt, or is there any intention for that to be asphalt as well?
I think that is asphalted, isn't it, I can't.
Does it matter one way or the other for a fire truck?
Oh, it does.
Thirteen said it had to meet the fire code, the access road does too.
So they're gonna pay for it from the maintenance shed to Telegraph?
I would assume.
Okay, all right. Who comes up with that design, is that the developer, or is that the fire chief, or, of the, of the second access?
The applicant will propose it, and Fire Department, Public Works will make sure it meets grade and their requirements, so it's a joint venture on that.
All right. Uh, Commissioners, any other additional initial questions, uh, for Eldon?
Eldon, I'm sorry, I had, I had one, the, this isn't Knightley Rendles, is it, it's the one underneath it was the Knightley Rendles, right?
Correct, yeah, this would be gated, private, residential lots.
The Knightleys are right down here, yeah, and so.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was, that's what I, that's what I thought, I just wanted to ask that question.
Is the gate right there at the roundabout?
It is, just, there's two gates.
See these little zigzag areas, go ahead, Eldon, I'll just.
Yeah, that's exactly right, yeah, two gates there.
Eldon, I was having a side conversation, and you probably spoke on this, but the secondary access that was required for additional density, is that this, this dark road that we see coming off of it?
It is, yeah, feeds down to the maintenance.
And that'll be conveyed to the, is that gonna be a private right, or will that be conveyed to the, to the public, Adam, do you know that?
That's what I understood, an access easement that is maintained.
Yeah, I, I don't think we would want to own it, because then we may have to maintain it like a public road. But, but yeah, whatever, whatever he's requiring, twenty-five wide, feet wide, paved for apparatus, secondary emergency access, so.
And just to clarify what I had mentioned earlier, whether or not that road from Telegraph to the maintenance shed, whether it's dirt or not, that will be asphalt when this project is being built. For the fire trucks to be able to get off on and get on to the secondary access if they needed it.
Yeah, Fire Chief will sign off on it, um, you know, the condition is that the secondary access shall be asphalt pavement and meet Fire Access Code. Uh, so Chief will be involved and sign off on that approval.
Will, will it have a crash through gate, gate or fence up there, or?
Access for them to get into, yes.
How many people are gonna know about it, for one thing, and how to get to it, and it's behind the gate on the north end? Right, it's in the, I'll just pull that down there. It's behind the gates, within the gated community itself. So, I mean, I, depends on what they want to do, it, there may be a, there may be a Knox Box gate somewhere. And I would imagine if they're gonna do it, they would do it way down here, not even let people get up that far. But we'll, we'll handle that, that, that'll be up to them.
Yeah, I, I, it's just an HOA fee, you know? Kinda, but whatever.
Just a fee?
Yeah.
Thanks, Eldon. Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this item this evening? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll turn the time back over to you Commissioners for questions, comments. Or the applicant, Adam, is there anything you want to add to this at all?
Unless you guys have questions.
Now, I did see you shaking your head, and I think my mind's just playing tricks on me here, because the intention is to have the asphalt all the way to Telegraph, correct? Okay.
Correct, yes, it didn't get hatched all the way out there, but the Fire Chief has said that the whole secondary access will have to be paved, so we'll have to continue paving and make sure that it works all the way out there.
Okay.
What's, what's the grade?
Uh, we have to make it less than ten percent. And so, uh, we have put together a preliminary grade on it and went over it with the Fire Chief, or the, the new Fire Marshal. And, uh, we're less than ten percent now, but we're still massaging exactly how that's gonna be with them.
Looks like you guys are using that road they had to do during construction time, right, that you had to cut in? And you're just gonna bend that around, probably more tight here, I would imagine, then.
Yeah, we had some other things worked out, but with the golf course, we've had to move it mostly back to there. So we had it in a different location, but trying to work through it with the golf course, that was the location they would come to agreement on.
There isn't any reason that the golf course would ever use this for anything, is there?
No, no. This is solely for, uh, code-wise, some kind of crazy, something happens, blow a, you know, gas line in the entrance there to, at the entrance, then fire can get in, people can get out if they need.
Okay, does it matter that it's behind a closed gate? They'll open it if there's an emergency?
And they would probably open it up and, and filter people that way.
Yeah, I don't, I think the, the Fire Department at that point would, because I think he told us that they put bollards up there, the removable bollards, or the crash bollards that they have us put on, and so they usually then direct how people are leaving the area, and so they would open the gates or do whatever they need to do to, to tell people how to get out.
All right, I don't have anything else, Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
No.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
I'll look for a motion on item four A, or additional comments or questions you may have.
Because streetlights have been a topic, John, is that intersection on Telegraph a future streetlight intersection? Has that ever been studied, I, I know that I've heard conversations somewhere along there someday, but not that one.
It'd probably be a little hard to study right now after it's up and used, because, oh, the only thing going in and out of there is construction stuff, so we'll probably have to wait and get some counts.
Someday we'll, someday we'll know what we need where, right?
All right, still on the table is looking for a motion, or if we need to discuss further?
This is Commissioner Bullock. I move to recommend the preliminary plat for the Club at Coral Canyon subdivision based on the two findings and fourteen conditions.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
Kind of first and a second, Commissioner, or Commissioner Bullock first, Tupow second, individual voting, Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Tupow?
Aye.
Shiel?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an I as well. Item number four A has been approved for the preliminary plat. Uh, this one will go to item number four B, this is also a public hearing and consideration to approve the preliminary plat for Waters Edge at Stewke Farms, located at Washington Fields Road and Groves Parkway, the applicant is Civil Science and Visionary Home. The applicant is Civil Science and Visionary Homes. Turn the time over to Eldon for staff report.
This particular subdivision is proposing 100 townhome units and 78 single-family lots for a total of 178 units covering 22.199 acres. This is a density of 8.02 dwelling units per acre. Phase one includes an open landscaped area with a walking path. Washington Fields Road and Groves Parkway will have a 15-foot landscape buffer and will be maintained by the HOA. Each townhome unit will provide a two-car garage and a full 20-foot long driveway allowing four cars to park at each unit. There are, there are also 29 surface parking stalls being provided in this development. Proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the land use authority approve the preliminary plat for Water's Edge at Stukey Farms subdivision based on the following findings and subject to the conditions as stated in staff report. And condition 13, I'll just read off here, which is beyond our normal 12 condition states. Prior to final plat application, Groves Parkway will need to be public roadway providing access to this development. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Eldon?
What's the master plan for that Groves Parkway? Where does it, where's it going to end? Where does it, what's the thinking on it?
Get loops all the way around and back up and around up north.
Probably connect to that road that's already there, I don't know what it's called. It's, uh, the other side of the street from my road.
I'll only be able to show you a small amount of it, but- So it'll feed into the Stukey Farms Parkway that goes farther south?
Oh, okay.
Comes back around lower down here. It's a whole loop thing, but this will tie into that intersection, a T-intersection into it. Somewhere over here.
Yeah, I just, I see where it ties into the Warner Valley Road, I just didn't know where it went, I just-
Yeah, you can see kind of the white line right there, right? Of what's, but it'll continue going this direction. It's kind of hard to see my arrow there, but it'll take off up at that same angle somewhat and then tie into Stukey Farms Parkway over here.
Okay, yeah, that's-
That's completely around.
I'm just curious where it went.
Drew, can you zoom in to like the storage?
Your backyard?
Yeah, where they- You see the pool that got put in? The, it's the very bottom of the screen right now, if you go up a little bit. Right there where the storage of all the RVs and stuff is?
Down here?
Yeah, this is just above that or is this taking that out?
This is right above it. Or is it going to be coming out, Brandy, those, that collection area?
The storage place that's there where all the RVs were being stored, is this like- But I mean, this is-
But this is part of that development, I mean, or part of it will go through that.
This goes on top of it? Okay, so that's gone, disappear, okay.
Yeah.
I was wondering if it came right up to it or if, um, okay. Yeah. This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward. I'll close the public hearing and turn the time back over to Commissioners for any questions on this item.
Is there any kind of a timeframe, what, what they're thinking? I think so.
Brandy Walker with Civil Science representing the applicant tonight. They are excited and ready to move forward, so we're just waiting on approvals. Groves Parkway right now is currently with staff and their review department. So it's, they've got grading permit on that road. It's its own improvement project, so it's getting underway now. So the road will be out ahead of this development, but these guys are ready to start as soon as we get all the approvals.
Any other questions that we're thinking about or thoughts, otherwise I'll look for a motion.
This is Sheil, I can make a motion. I move that we approve a preliminary plat for Water's Edge at Stukey Farms preliminary plat located at Washington Fields Road and Groves Parkway with the findings and conditions suggested by staff.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
Chairman, if I might just comment, not on the motion, but on, on this area, just for the Commissioners' understanding. So this is a PCD that got approved a couple decades ago and the approval was not putting density specific to areas. And so, this if approved, the density that's on this would come out of the total allocation of approvals on the PCD. Staff's communicated with the applicant and the owner and they're aware of that. Staff's aware that some areas of this PCD may come back for PCD amendments. And if they do want to seek changes in their allocations, that would have to be something that gets approved too. So, so this and the densities that it represents are within the approved densities of the PCD and will be administered by staff as just subtracting from what was approved.
Perfect. Brandy, I thought of one question really quick, I know the motion's been first and second, we'll get to that. With the exception of the townhouses, the homes themselves and the lots, is it going to look and feel similar to Warner Gateway that was developed just down the road from this? I think Visionary had a hand in that development, is it going to look somewhat similar?
You know, I have not seen renderings on the homes. I have seen renderings on the towns and I'm not overly familiar with what they ended up building in Warner. But I know they're, I want to say that these are newer renderings that Visionary was working up specific for this neighborhood. They're kind of doing like a beachy vibe thing.
Okay, all right, thanks.
A what vibe thing, a beachy vibe?
Look at their street names!
I haven't seen those either. Zoom in there for me, Drew.
What's that?
Zoom into the street names.
Redondo Avenue, Shorebreak Drive.
We're just right down there on Newport Beach, huh?
Malibu Drive.
Right next to the beach and the waves.
Bismarck.
Interesting.
Guess we moved to Southern California.
Yeah.
Southern California moved here.
All right. Yeah. There's a Carlsbad Drive on there. I've got a motion on this item on the table, a first by Commissioner Sheil, a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Tupou.
Aye.
Sheil.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, I'm Hanson. And item number 4A has been approved for the preliminary plat. Thanks for coming in, Brandy. And item number 5A, this is an amended final plat. It's also a public hearing and consideration to approve the final plat for Bedford subdivision lots 1 and 2 located at Hayfield Drive and Washington Fields Road. The applicant is Civil Science and Leanne Hoops. And I'll turn the time over to Eldon for staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The reason for this amendment is to split lot 1 into two lots and identify the needed public utility easement on lot 1. No other changes are being made at this time. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the C1 zoning of this development. Subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends the land use authority approve the Bedford partial amendment A subdivision based on the following original findings and subject to the following original conditions as stated in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, Commissioners, I'll turn the time over for initial questions.
Lots 1 and 2 used to be one large parcel, they're now splitting those off, becoming their own.
With a road between them.
Correct.
I had one question that may or may not be related to this particular, I mean, it is, I guess, but lot 1, as I'm watching it, be developed as I drive by it. I thought that there was going to be a second entrance onto Treasure Valley Road, but it looks like there's not. Is that, it's not there? Did we decide against that or am I, as Roger Clemens would say, misremembering what we talked about the first time? But it-
No, it doesn't get access.
Okay. Because we start, we talked a lot about the stacking that may happen on Hayfield and we talked about a secondary entrance there coming out, but, okay. Sounds like it's not in the plan. I don't have anything else.
So this is commercial, right?
Right now it's all graded and pretty much ready to look like it's going to be paved here pretty quick. All the utilities are in and everything like that. Oh, this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody like to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name. Rusty, what do you think, you want to say? No? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll-
I'll just give public comment about the road names.
Public easement?
Hayfield Drive, but that one was previously named. Hayfield Drive is not far from Malibu Lane, let's just put it that way. Really close.
Good call. All right, anything else Commissioners on this item? I'll look for a motion on 5A.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve the partial amended final plat for the Bedford subdivision located at Hayfield Drive and Washington Fields Road with the findings and conditions outlined by staff.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Tupou. Individual voting, Bullock.
Aye.
Tupou.
Aye.
Sheil.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. And we are approving to move ahead on an approval for the amended final plat, Bedford subdivision. Land use authority members, is there anything that needs to be brought before the body at this time? Any additional things? I'll look for a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I make a motion to adjourn.
Sheil I second.
I've got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All aye? The meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.